Call the City Council to order at 8:00 PM on Monday, March 23rd. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This evening's meeting will be conducted a little differently than our usual council meetings. We're implementing the Governor's Order regarding relief for the open meeting law. So this allows councilors to participate remotely. And although there are seven here in the chamber-
Point of order?
Counselor Orem.
Mr. President, if could you stand a little bit back behind the mic? You are really coming out all mumbled. I don't know if the other call-ins are hearing the same thing. Thank you.
Point well taken. I'll back up and speak softer. All eleven councilors are participating this evening. Seven are in the chambers. I'd like to recognize Councilors Orem, Pearlman, Navin, and Wagner, who are taking advantage of remote access and are joining us via the speakerphone. Thank you, councilors. I'd also like to recognize Counselor Navin for suggesting that the council's in attendance maintain safe social distancing of six feet of separation, and so we've done that this evening. This meeting is being conducted to address some time-critical procedural issues. Councilors have been asked to get answers to their questions prior to the meeting so that this meeting can be conducted efficiently and minimize our time in the chamber this evening. All votes will be via the roll call. There are seventeen items on this evening's agenda. I'll now ask the city clerk to read Agenda Item Number One.
Number One: Communication from Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding acceptance of emergency order suspending provisions of the open meeting law relative to permitting city councilors to participate remotely.
Can I ask the city clerk to read the order, please?
Ordered: Pursuant to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Governor Baker's Emergency Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, issued March 12th, 2020, the city council is authorized to conduct its proceedings under the relief provided in the emergency order, and any or all members may participate remotely. This authorization shall apply to all subcommittees of the city council.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, Counselor Tenera.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the order. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the city clerk to read the roll.
Counselor Irish?
Yes.
Counselor Tenera?
Yes.
Counselor Orem?
Yes.
Counselor Aussing?
Yes.
Counselor Wagner? Counselor Pearlman?
Yes.
Counselor Roby?
Yes.
Counselor Dumas?
Yes.
Counselor Landers?
Yes.
Counselor Navin?
Yes.
Counselor Duset?
Yes.
And Counselor Wagner?
Mr. President, at this time, I don't know if we should check to make sure she's on line.
Is Counselor Wagner on the line still? We'll let the record reflect at this point that Counselor Wagner is not on the line in the results of the vote, Mr. Clerk?
Ten ye, one absent.
The motion to approve the order is approved, ten, zero, with one absent. Agenda item number two.
Update from the mayor regarding the city of Marlborough's response to the COVID-19 coronavirus outbreak.
Entertain a motion to suspend the rules?
No. Motion to suspend.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow the mayors to speak. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the roll for suspending the rules to allow the mayor to speak.
Counselor Aussing?
Yes.
Counselor Wagner? Counselor Roby?
Yes.
Counselor Tenera?
Yes.
Counselor Dumas?
Yes.
Counselor Pearlman?
Yes.
Counselor Landers?
Yes.
Counselor Orem?
Yes.
Counselor Duset?
Yes.
Counselor Navin?
Yes.
Counselor Irish?
Yes.
Ten ye, one absent, sir.
The motion to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak has been approved by a vote of ten in favor, one not present. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members, thank you very much for allowing me to come down tonight and give you an update on how we've been addressing things in the city with the coronavirus. It was just two short weeks ago today that it was brought to my attention that we had two potential cases in the city of Marlborough. That was on March 9th. We started that day providing social information to our residents to inform them of what was going on. Two days later, on March 11th, one of those cases was confirmed positive and was under house quarantine. We had our first press conference again to update the residents on our procedures moving forward. On March 14th, the superintendent closed the schools for a two-week period, and shortly after that, the governor closed all schools in the Commonwealth for three weeks until April 6th. I want to tell you tonight that I don't believe for one minute that that won't be extended, at least till the end of April. Hasn't been announced yet, but you can almost plan on that. On March 16th, I declared a state of emergency in the city of Marlborough. I closed the senior center, the library, and all our recreation programs and the recreation facility to all our resident that went to visit these facilities. All employees were still reporting to work, and today are still reporting to work with the buildings closed. They're available by phone and by email. I postponed the tax work-off program for our seniors and postponed the internship program for our high school and college students. On March 17th, we implemented a senior aid program. If any seniors need any help, or if we have people that would like to volunteer to help some of our seniors, please call the senior center at (508) 485-6492. So if you need help and need services, or you would like to volunteer, (485) 6492. That day, the police and fire departments secured their lobby areas, requiring people to use the buzz-in system to get into the building. City Hall closed to the public on that day. Again, all our employees are reporting to work. We also implemented a drop-off program in both the front and the back of City Hall, where we put in secure boxes that people can drop off any information they like to provide to the city, whether they're paying one of their bills and would like to drop it in the box, plans for a permit, anything that they need distributed throughout the building can be dropped into that box, and it's sorted several times a day. On March 18th, the superintendent implemented a food program for our students. Because we have all our students in the elementary schools bussed, he implemented a program where the buses themselves would be delivering meals to our students. They bring a breakfast and a lunch to anyone standing outside at one of the bus stops, whether it's one of the students or whether it's the parents requesting food for their family. In just three days, between Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the schools delivered 6,638 meals to our students and our residents.
That's crazy.
We also implemented the Marlborough Community Hotline. That phone number is (508) 251-5622. That's for non-emergency questions that may come to the city. It's available 24/7. It goes to my office during business hours and to police and fire dispatch after hours. It's not for medical calls or medical requests. If you have an emergency, call 911. This is for questions, is City Hall open? Are you going to be available for a certain meeting? Whatever the question is from the public, they can call this, and we'll make sure that we try to get them an answer as fast as possible. On March 20th, we extended the deadline for excise tax bills in the city till April 30th, and I want to thank our collective for getting that information out there. The emergency services team of the city had its first meeting and started moving forward with their plans. MEDC reached out to our business community to ask for donations of any available masks, gloves, eyewear, or gowns that companies might have in their stockrooms that they could distribute to our police-fire personnel, and if we have a surplus, we'll be delivering those up to the hospital. Today, on March 23rd, all childcare centers in the city and across the Commonwealth were closed, except for the nonprofits that are open for our emergency services personnel and first responders, and with very few exceptions, those are the people that are going to get the services. I've been on several conference calls on a daily basis, talking with the governor, with the Marlborough Hospital, with other elected officials, our representatives from Washington, and I have a daily call with the council president to get him updated on what we're doing. How you can help. Stay at home. If at all possible, stay at home, especially our seniors and people that have health conditions. Those are the people that are most vulnerable to this situation. Wash your hands, use hand sanitizers, refrain from touching your face. Continue to support our local businesses. Instead of going to the restaurant, call for a takeout order. They could all use your support today. You can donate to the local food pantry that has needs on a daily basis from 9:00 to 2:00 and evenings on Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:00. Or you can simply donate to either the mayor's charity fund or checks directly to us via the United Way. We'll make sure we provide those checks to support their services. We need to continue to govern. We have a city to run. We have fire and police and our first responders that need to continue working every day. Our health department is now more important than ever to make sure we support them. Payroll continues to go out. We need to make sure those people stay in place. Our seniors and our vulnerable population need to be cared for, either through the senior center or through human services, and we need to continue to educate our students throughout the city and take care of them. So we need to do our job, and I know this is very unusual tonight, to see the council looking like this, very sparse and, you know, safe distance away from each other. But I thank you all very, very much for continuing to support what we're doing and continuing to keep our government moving. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any comments or questions from members of the city council? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept and place on file. Counselor Tenera?
President, motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the update from the mayor. I'll ask the city clerk to read the roll.
Counselor Landers?
Yes.
Counselor Tenera?
Yes.
Counselor Irish?
Yes.
Counselor Orem?
Yes.
Counselor Pearlman?
Yes.
Counselor Aussing?
Yes.
Counselor Roby?
Yes.
Counselor Navin?
Yes.
Counselor Wagner?
Yes.
Counselor Dumas?
Yes.
Oops, sorry. Counselor Wagner?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Dumas?
Yes.
Counselor Duset?
Yes.
Eleven ye, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion to accept and place on file the update from the mayor is approved, eleven, zero. Mr. Mayor, we thank you and the first responders and the city hall employees and staff for their support, and we'll help in any way we can.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members.
Item number three.
Minutes, City Council meeting, March 9th, 2020.
Counselor Tenera?
Mr. President, accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Wagner? Counselor Dumas?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Roby?
Yes.
Counselor Orem?
Yes.
Counselor Duset?
Yes.
Counselor Aussing?
Yes.
Counselor Pearlman?
Yes.
Counselor Tenera?
Yes.
Counselor Landers?
Yes.
Counselor Navin?
Yes.
Counselor Irish?
Yes.
Eleven ye, sir.
Motion to accept and place on file in minutes is approved, eleven, zero. Item four.
Now is the time set for the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 5, 17, and 18 relative to contractor yards and their proposed rezoning of land located on Farm Road identified as Map 85, Parcel 12, Order Number 20-100-7947.
Open the public meeting for the purpose of continuing to a time and date certain. Counselor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to continue the public hearing until April 27th, 2020, at 8:00.
Motion has been made and seconded to continue the public hearing until April 27th at 8:00. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Duset?
Yes.
Counselor Roby?
Yes.
Counselor Irish?
Yes.
Counselor Landers?
Yes.
Counselor Wagner?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Orem?
Yes.
Counselor Orem?
It would be a yes if it was.
Counselor Aussing?
Yes.
Counselor Tenera?
Yes.
Counselor Navin?
Yes.
Counselor Dumas?
Yes.
Eleven ye.
The motion to continue the public hearing for contractor yards to April 27th at 8:00 is confirmed. You're not reminding me to bang the gavel.
Sorry.
Item five.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for an LED signed special permit from William Camuso on behalf of Lincoln 431 LLC, which is a Shell station at 431 Lincoln Street, Order Number 20-100-7948.
I will now open the public hearing for the purpose of continuing it to a time and date certain. Counselor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to continue the public hearing until April 27th, 2020, at 8:00 PM.
Motion has been made and seconded to continue the public hearing until April 27th at 8:00 PM. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I ask the clerk to read the roll.
Counselor Tenera?
Yes.
Counselor Pearlman?
Yes.
Counselor Aussing?
Yes.
Counselor Dumas?
Yes.
Counselor Irish?
Yes.
Counselor Landers?
Yes.
Counselor Duset?
Yes.
Counselor Orem?
Yes.
Counselor Roby?
Yes.
Counselor Navin?
Yes.
Counselor Wagner?
Yes.
Eleven ye, sir.
The motion to continue the public hearing for the Shell sign permit is approved to April 27th, or continued to April 27th at 8:00 PM. Item six.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $55,000, which moves funds from interest-on-ban to contract services in the building department.
Counselor Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the transfer of $55,000.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the transfer of $55,000 for the building department contract services. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Landers?
Yes.
Counselor Tenera?
Yes.
Counselor Aussing?
Yes.
Counselor Navin?
Yes.
Counselor Roby?
Yes.
Counselor Duset?
Yes.
Counselor Dumas?
Yes.
Counselor Wagner?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Irish?
Yes.
Counselor Orem?
Yes.
Eleven ye, sir.
The motion to approve the $55,000 transfer for contract services in the building department is approved, eleven, zero. Item seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding an order to reauthorize bonds from 2006 and 2008 to realize savings on interest costs.
Counselor Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve to reauthorize the bonds and to thank city auditor Mrs. Diane Smith for her work in getting this language together.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the reauthorization of bonds, which will save the city money on interest rates going forward. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Duset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I did reach out to the city auditor Diane Smith earlier today. Just for clarification, considering that these bonds date back to 2006 and 2008, I was just concerned that if we refinanced, that it would basically restructure the funding to go forward, but the maturity date is not going to be changing with this interest rate change, so I'm very comfortable with that, and I really do appreciate the city auditor going into this and getting this done. So, great job for her, absolutely.
Thank you very much, Counselor Duset. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Aussing?
Yes.
Counselor Wagner?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Duset?
Yes.
Counselor Pearlman?
Yes.
Counselor Landers?
Yes.
Counselor Roby?
Yes.
Counselor Tenera?
Yes.
Counselor Irish?
Yes.
Counselor Orem?
Yes.
Counselor Navin?
Yes.
Eleven ye, sir.
Motion to approve the reauthorization of the bonds is approved, eleven, zero. Reports of committees. Counselor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. The city council urban affairs committee met on Tuesday, March 10th, 7:00 in council chambers. We took up one order, Number 20-100-7915, which was the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 17, and Section 18 relative to livestock farms. We had a discussion among ourselves regarding the difference between the city council versus the Board of Health and the fact that they have regulations in place to deal with chickens and felt that those were sufficient and that this would then allow residents of the city who are currently raising chickens to be doing it legally. The planning board met. They did not have any formal recommendation for us. I do not believe they met tonight, so our recommendation from the committee was to approve pending the recommendation from the planning board. So this will lay on the table until we have that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Roby. Any other reports? Hearing none, Agenda Item Number Eight.
Ordered that the city council approve the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Financial Review Recommendation for Adopting an Abbreviated Budget Authorization Format for All Departments for Fiscal Year 2021 City Budget, submitted by Councilors Irish and Aussing.
Counselor Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly under the current circumstances and to allow the mayor to send the budget to the city council for FY '21, my motion is to approve the abbreviated budget format for fiscal year FY '21.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to approve the fiscal year '21 abbreviated budget. And I'll just provide a little insight for the councilors. You may recall at our last meeting, we approved a similar order but sent it to finance. The one that we sent to finance is to make it the way going forward. This is just for one year. We've done it the last three years. It's been extremely successful with the department heads and the efficiency in which we've been working government. So the request before you is to approve the fiscal year '21 abbreviated budget process. It allows the mayor guidance and direction, because I don't know when we're going to meet again, to put a budget together. He has 145 days to get it to us. So, with that, I'll open it up to discussion for the councilors. Counselor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, to be clear, I certainly support continuing the practice that we've had the past couple years with the abbreviated budget, but if I'm remembering correctly, the plan was to make it permanent, and so this was only now just due for this year, and then we'll look at it again next year for making it permanent?
Well, we have it. Currently, the one to make it permanent is in finance. I just, we weren't able to get it out of finance in time for this, so this helped the stopgap measure, because I didn't know when the council will meet again, and the mayor's meeting with the department heads now requires direction on how to put a budget together. So, this is the simplest one. I think the councilors that have been on the council recognize it's worked well. The new councilors will get that opportunity. When Finance Chairman Irish takes up the order to make it a permanent one, now we have a year to make that decision, basically. This buys us, you know, we got to get something, you know, he planned to submit the budget the end of April.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Roby. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to approve the roll, or to call the roll.
Counselor Roby?
Yes.
Counselor Aussing?
Yes.
Counselor Landers?
Yes.
Counselor Tenera?
Yes.
Counselor Orem?
Yes.
Counselor Dumas?
Yes.
Counselor Irish?
Yes.
Counselor Navin?
Yes.
Counselor Pearlman?
Yes.
Counselor Duset?
Yes.
Counselor Wagner?
Yes.
Eleven ye.
The motion to approve the fiscal year '21 abbreviated budget is approved, eleven, Item nine.
Order 19-100-7840, an application for renewal of a livery license by Katsunori Tanaka, DBA Global Limousine and Tour Services LLC at 17 Eager Court, and the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve the application.
Counselor Landers?
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to approve.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the livery license for Global Limo. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Orem?
Yes.
Counselor Navin?
Yes.
Counselor Wagner?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Landers?
Yes.
Counselor Pearlman?
Yes.
Counselor Roby?
Yes.
Counselor Dumas?
Yes.
Counselor Duset?
Yes.
Counselor Aussing?
Yes.
And Counselor Tenera?
Yes.
Eleven ye, sir.
Motion to approve the livery license for Global Limo is approved, eleven, zero. Item 10.
Order 20-100-7933, a petition from Massachusetts Electric to install a new pole and anchor, Number 79-84, on Berlin Road-
Road, which will enable National Grid to remove the pole to treat guy wire, and the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve the petition. Counselor Landers.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Mass Electric request to do some pole modifications on Berlin Road. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Ossing.
Yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Yes.
Counselor Landers.
Yes.
Counselor Irish.
Yes.
Counselor Navin.
Yes.
Counselor Oram.
Yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Yes.
Counselor Wagner. Counselor Dusset.
Yes.
Counselor Roby.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to approve the Mass Electric pole work on Berlin Road is approved, eleven zero. Item eleven. Order number twenty dash one hundred seven nine four zero, transfer request in the amount of four hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-two cents, which moves funds from PEG funds to Marlboro Cable Trust to fund the operation of WMCT for fiscal year 2021, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the transfer as requested by the mayor. Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to approve the transfer.
Motion made and seconded to approve the transfers recommended by the Finance Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Roby.
Yes.
Counselor Landers.
Yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Yes.
Counselor Navin.
Yes.
Counselor Oram.
Yes.
Counselor Irish.
Yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Yes.
Counselor Wagner. Counselor Ossing.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. Motion to approve the transfer to fund the cable station for fiscal year 21 is approved, eleven zero. Item twelve. Order number twenty dash one hundred seven nine four one, transfer request in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars from undesignated fund to stabilization open space to replace the money used for the purchase of land on Bolton Street, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the transfer as requested by the mayor. Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the transfer.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to recuse myself from this vote.
Understand, we'll let the record reflect that you will recuse yourself from the vote. Thank you, Counselor Dumas. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the transfer to replenish the open space stabilization account. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Navin.
Yes.
Counselor Oram.
Yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Yes.
Counselor Roby.
Yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Yes.
Counselor Ossing.
Yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Yes.
Counselor Wagner. Counselor Dumas is abstaining. Counselor Irish.
Yes.
Counselor Landers.
Yes.
Ten yeas, sir. The motion to approve the four hundred thousand dollar transfers approved, ten with one counselor abstaining. Item thirteen. Order number twenty dash one hundred seven nine three zero, reappointment to the Community Development Authority of David Mortiselli for a three-year term from date of confirmation, and the recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve the reappointment. Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. The motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the appointment of Mr. Mortiselli to the CDA. Do you want to do all of them at one time?
That's fine with me.
So you want to restate your motion, Counselor Dumas? You want to approve items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen?
That'd be great. So motion to approve item number thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen on tonight's agenda.
Motion's made and seconded to approve items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, all appointments, and I will ask the clerk to read the appointments before we vote on them. Item fourteen is order twenty dash one hundred seven nine four three, the appointment of Lynn Daven as the Director of Human Resources for a three-year term from date of confirmation. Fifteen, order number twenty dash one hundred seven nine four four, the appointment of Michael Hennessy as the Director of Veteran Services for a three-year term effective February 10th, 2020. Item sixteen, order number twenty dash one hundred seven nine four five, the reappointment of Beverly Sleeper as Chief Procurement Officer for a three-year term from date of confirmation. And item seventeen is order number twenty dash one hundred seven nine four six, the appointment of Melinda Gallagher to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term from date of confirmation, and all these appointments are recommended by the Personnel Committee, sir. Motion made and seconded again to approve items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, all appointments by the mayor. Is there any discussion on the motion? So again, it's one motion to approve all five appointments. I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Pearlman.
Yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Yes.
Counselor Landers.
Yes.
Counselor Oram.
Yes.
Counselor Wagner. Counselor Navin.
Yes.
Counselor Roby.
Yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Yes.
Counselor Ossing.
Yes.